Okay, so I'll make a start. My name is Connie. I'm an epidemiologist with the Public Health Department and also an academic GP part of the time. And I've been involved in all three projects together with Matt Harris, who is also here today. Hello, Matt. And I'm really excited about these projects. And we've got an hour to watch the presentations and answer questions. Just wanted to kick off to say that this is our fourth year of having Imperial students at the BiBora in public health, and every year gets a bit better. And I'm so excited about the findings of these projects and how they are really, really relevant and every year more relevant for our policies and strategies. So the work that NISA has done is going to feed into an overall public health approach to youth offending. We also have Reina and Vidya's work, which hopefully will inform a pilot in Churchill Gardens. So this is really useful, exciting, and it's great to contribute to kind of evidence-based work at the council. So without further ado, I'll hand over. I'm not sure who's starting, is it Reina or Vidya?
I think it's me.
Vidya. To you, Vidya.
Can you see my screen now?
We can't see it yet.
Okay, let me try again. Any better now?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, perfect. Hello, everyone. As Connie kindly introduced me, my name is Vidya and I'm an MPH student at Imperial, and I've just finished my master's dissertation. So my dissertation title was "Bridging the Gap: Reverse Innovation in a Deprived London Ward to Increase Community Wellbeing and Health." So the contents of my presentation will be the following. Firstly, my background and literature review, followed by research question, aims and objectives, then on to the methods, results, and finally discussion points. So firstly, the background and literature review. So the term community health worker is actually an umbrella term. It embraces a wide range of different community health aides. Who, once trained, they go back to the community that they came from. Hence, their key trait associated with the role is that these individuals have shared life experiences with those that they're working with, enabling them to appropriately respond to local societal and cultural norms. These community health workers, they can take on various roles and responsibilities, helping to bridge the gap between primary care and public health. And these roles can include referrals, triaging, providing support, navigation, health promotion, and education, to name a few. And this has seen to improve community health outcomes whilst also improving disease management. These programs first originated in China in the 1920s as an attempt to address the rural population's health needs, and since they've grown in number, especially in low/middle income countries, where they've played a pivotal role in healthcare delivery, helping to improve access to primary care, facilitating integration whilst also overcoming shortfalls in human resources. Today, one country that has one of the most successful community health worker programs is actually in Brazil, where it covers approximately 70% of the population and also played a pivotal role in the primary care reform in the nation. So there are three key attributes associated to the success of Brazil's community health worker model. Firstly, its universality. So community health workers, they cover approximately 150 to 200 households. And regardless of need, they'll visit each of these households at least once a month. Secondly, the comprehensive nature of the program. So it goes beyond the traditional biomedical model to also address and look at the social determinants of health. And finally, the integration. So these community health workers, they work as part of a primary care team, which includes doctors, nurses, and other allied health professionals, enabling them to communicate regularly, share their field notes, allowing a patient need to be addressed efficiently and effectively. So a recent modeling study by Heo Atol showed promise and potential value in implementing a community health worker model similar to Brazil in the UK, especially helping to improve the uptake of preventative services such as immunization and screening, for example. But it's important to remember that there are many differences between Brazil and the UK. So unlike Brazil, the UK is already home to a plethora of community health roles, whether this be health visitors, health trainers, community champions, just to name a few. And they form and work within a complex and busy health and social care landscape. And in the current literature, it's unknown how and if this new model can fit in with the existing services. And it's also unknown how health and community professionals would perceive the introduction of such a role and a model within their communities. Therefore, the purpose and rationale behind my research was to speak to local stakeholders and to understand their perception, beliefs, and attitudes to introducing such a model, and whether they saw value in it, whether they saw any challenges associated with it. And it was considered important to understand their beliefs, as they have a pivotal role in whether it be facilitating integration of the role, providing supervision, or providing support. All elements which have been found to be fundamental to the success of any community health worker program that has occurred in the past. Therefore, based on this rationale, my research question was: How appropriate is it to introduce a Brazilian community health worker model, a universal, comprehensive, and integrated program in Churchill Gardens, which is my site of study, from the perspective of its local community health service providers and stakeholders? And then I fulfilled this research question using my base following two aims, as shown on the slide, which were pursued using the following four objectives, as shown. So to conduct this study and to understand this phenomenon, I used a qualitative methodology. So ethical approval was obtained from ICRC. And overall, four interviews and four focus group discussions were conducted, with overall 23 participants who were recruited using purpose of and snowball sampling. So participants included stakeholders such as family navigators, community champions, integrated care professionals, and social prescribing link workers, to name a few. All interviews and focus group discussions were recorded and transcribed, and then they were analyzed using the framework analysis method at a later stage. So from the framework analysis method, four key themes appeared. So these were opportunities, barriers, expectations, and existing roles. So when interpreting these themes further, it was found that overall stakeholders found that introducing a Brazilian community health worker model in Churchill Gardens presented unique and necessary opportunities, especially in regards to its universal nature and the promise of a geography-based household approach, which they considered to be proactive and preventative. And they thought it would be particularly beneficial to help identify hidden individuals who do not actively go and seek health or social care support despite having the need. However, barriers also came up too. So this include logistical challenges and also distrust, which was considered to be a large barrier to potential engagement from residents based on their past experiences with other roles. Also, stakeholders expressed their expectations of the role. So community health workers are expected to be skilled communicators, to be emotionally intelligent, and to have comprehensive training. And then when comparing this role to existing roles, it was found that there were many similarities, especially in regards to the ethos and the intention of the role. But there were also many differences, and no one role was found to duplicate this role in its entirety, indicating a niche for the role. And when looking at whether to use existing assets and to adapt them for this new role, or whether to have a complete new workforce, there were conflicting views. So for example, other stakeholders perceived that community champions were the most similar role, but then when speaking, it would be beneficial to perhaps use them and to perhaps train them to become community health workers. But when speaking to community champions themselves, they perceived that if they adapted to this role, it would take away from what they're currently doing. So when looking at these results further, it was found that the role was considered to be acceptable because there was a niche need and narrative for the role. And however, hesitancy stemmed from the idea of establishing boundaries. So for example, whether it be personal and work-life boundaries for the community health worker themselves, as they will be working in the community that they actually live in, or in regards to crossing the threshold as community health workers are going into homes, a place that's considered to be very personal and private, and whether that would be intrusive. But overall, stakeholders considered that these challenges and barriers could be overcome with appropriate framing of the role. And appropriate framing was considered to be fundamental in order to facilitate engagement with both the residents and other stakeholders. So overall, there were many strengths and limitations associated with my research study. So strengths include the measures taken to ensure validity, such as transparent indexing, reflexivity. But limitations were mainly associated with the recruitment stage. So due to the COVID-19 pandemic, many community health professionals were overstretched during this time. Therefore, they had restricted time to be able to partake in this research. Therefore, we were not able to recruit all the desired community health roles. So for example, we were not able to speak to health visitors, which would have been interesting and beneficial too. But from the results that were gained, there were many implications of this research. So this research had a novel and valuable contribution that it showed that stakeholders considered a community health worker model to be both acceptable and compatible in a local setting. And also, there is great promise and potential for this role to be used, particularly in these testing times where the current system is burdened. And in many countries around the world where community health workers are, they are at the forefront, playing a pivotal role in fighting this pandemic in person, in real time, whilst also ensuring their community's pre-existing needs are not neglected and they are also addressed. And also, this model has great potential to help address health inequalities. As in Brazil, it was found that the poorer-than-average regions benefited the most from this model. Therefore, introducing this model, beginning in deprived wards, has great potential too. So based on my findings, I would suggest the next steps would be to map all formal and informal health services in Churchill Gardens to identify where exactly this model and role can fit in. And also, it's equally important to gather residents' perspectives to see how they would perceive the introduction of such a role, and whether this matches with stakeholders' perspectives, and to also understand what their expectations are. And then finally, based on this research, it will be important to trial the model and to test its feasibility and applicability for approximately 18 months or so, and to also collect quantitative and both qualitative data during this process. And this can hopefully pave the path to see how successful this model can be in practice. So here are my references, and thank you for listening. Any questions?
Thank you, Vidya. This has been really interesting. And I think quite unexpected, given that when we discussed this model, there was quite a bit of concern to start off with about, you know, there being so many roles already and how this would land, and whether people would feel that this was a bit of a competition with other roles. So I found it really interesting and really glad that all the roles were generally supportive of this. Can I just ask if anybody has any questions they want to ask? So we have a question here from Marina. Hi Marina. What can the community health worker role add to the role of the community champion? So how is that interface with the community champions in particular?
So in terms of what community champions do right now, it's very reactive. So they don't cover all the community comprehensively. So it's almost like they're reaching out, but it's not assertive research. They're not able to cover the entire population, and they're restricted, and they're almost signposting them to services. So I guess what this role would be, would be providing that universality so that every single household within that community would have access to this community health worker if they want to. So it's the individual, the household's decision whether they take that up. But it's ensuring that everyone is covered, which unfortunately, community champions aren't able to provide right now. And also, community champions are currently a voluntary service. So speaking to stakeholders suggested that this would be more of a paid role and that it would help provide that universality too.
Thank you. And I found it quite interesting reading your thesis. When there was feedback from the community champions that they sometimes felt overwhelmed by what was expected of them, and that I guess you're a bit more boundaried when it's a paid role and you have the support of a team behind you from primary care as well as other stakeholders. Any other questions? Matt?
Thank you so much, Connie and Vidya. Congratulations on this fantastic research and what a wonderful presentation. It's been a joy to work with you on this. I'm interested to just give you a moment to share with us if there are any reactions around where the community health worker model was from. The fact that it came from Brazil, as opposed to, say, another country. We found in other research that that matters sometimes, due to perhaps entrenched perceptions around country-level contexts and so forth. So did you pick up on any issues there around the fact that it came from Brazil and whether there are any resistances in that regard? And if not, why do you think that was not an issue?
So I think that's a really good question. So that was something that I was keeping an eye out to see whether there would be any hesitancy regarding adopting a model from Brazil. But everyone seemed quite engaged with the idea, and actually, many stakeholders had heard of it previously as well. And I think they were more interested in finding novel approaches. And I think perhaps that was to do with the current pandemic time when I was actually interviewing, and they were all more open to new approaches. So perhaps that had something to do with it too.
And it's interesting that it actually isn't restricted just to low and middle-income countries. So we know that it successfully is used in the US and in Australia as well, in some kind of changed version of it. Yeah.
No, definitely. I think there's more openness to reverse innovation that I saw.
Great. So if we have Reina next, and it's nice because it fits with Vidya's work in the sense that Reina, the kind of the quantitative element of this project. So Reina was looking at actually cost-benefit of this, because that's also important if we're thinking about rolling it out. And there might be more questions that you have about this role ones we've heard from Reina. Reina, you?
Do I sound okay? Because just now I have some sound problem.
Yeah?
All right. Okay. If anything weird happened, just tell me.
Okay. Over to you, Reina.
Okay, so I'll share my screen now. Okay. Can you see that?
Yes, we can see it. Yeah.
So I'll start now. Good morning, everyone. My name is Reina, and today I'm going to present my project on the cost-benefit of the Brazilian community health worker model in Westminster. It's a model return on investment study. So to begin with, I would like to share a Chinese saying called "May Yu Tao Mo." It's talking about birds with strength and nest before the rains come. So I would like to introduce a preventative model which can strengthen our community before the crisis, just like the birds. It's the Brazilian community health worker model. So community health worker or CHW are workers who facilitate access of service for individuals and communities. And such model has shown to be a low-cost intervention that enhances self-care and early prevention. It also improves the accessibility of healthcare, lessens the workload of frontline healthcare workers, improve overall community health outcomes, and at the same time, reducing the total health expenditure. It is therefore recommended by the WHO as a more fluidic approach to achieve proportionate universality. So why Westminster? Despite the fact that Westminster is one of the most prosperous boroughs in the country, it has a striking income disparity, and it is currently facing problems such as unemployment, high prevalence of diseases, and low upticks of screening and immunization compared to London's average. And Westminster is also facing healthcare challenges over the next 15 years, as there is a significant rise in aging population, with more teenagers growing up with obesity, mental health-related conditions, which in turn increase the cost of disease management. In light of the growing unmet need in Westminster, the CHW models lent itself to provide a part of the solution. A modeling study has been done by the Heho Atel in 2018, which demonstrates the possibility of the CHW models to improve national disease prevention and chronic disease management. It has also proved that the potential of cost-saving by shifting the focus from current targeted curative services to a more sustainable holistic home-based healthcare. So a pilot would be an essential step to investigate whether the success from the CHW models can be translated to the local healthcare system. Building on the modeling study done by the Heho paper, a similar study can be replicated. So this is the aim of my project, to explore the cost-benefit of implementation of the CHW models on a small scale in two deprived wards, which is Chert Street and Churchill Garden, where regeneration project takes place. So the objectives are to estimate the potential needs, the impact, the cost benefits, and the return on investment of implementation. I would now talk about the methods. So briefly, a cost-benefit analysis through a healthcare payer perspective was employed to estimate the monetary benefits as well as the associated cost of implementing the intervention. And the potential saving for different agencies are also calculated. All the data was collected through public domains such as the NHS Digitals, Public Health of England, and so on. And different formulas are included during the data analysis. However, due to the time limits, I will skip them for now. But I'm happy to explain them if anyone is interested. So I will talk about the major outcomes would be, the first one, the cost of introducing CHWs, the health impacts after introducing CHWs, and also the return on investment of introducing the intervention. And I will now talk about the key results. So we have analyzed the cost and the impacts of the intervention, assuming the workers can handle three different levels of households. So a minimum of 165 households, an average of 247.5 households, and a maximum of 330 households. So a conservative estimation demonstrates that with an average household case load, a total of 50 community health workers were required to cover both Chert Street and Churchill Garden with a cost of around £1.2 million. So if each worker in Chert Street and Churchill Garden successfully referred 20% of their patients for cancer screening and immunization, in the fifth year, these numbers shows in the screen would be the additional people being screened and immunized. So if all patients with chronic diseases in the two wards were managed well by the health workers regularly, a total of 644 hospital visits could be avoided per year, with a total of £1.6 million could be saved for all hospitalization afforded annually. A potential annual savings around £5.8 million could be made due to diabetes, depression, and dementia management, and also reemployment. So this would yield a short-term return on investment for the first year, with $3 for Chert Street and $3.55 for Churchill Garden. And a long-term return on investment for the fifth year with $3.32 for Chert Street and $4.14 for Churchill Garden. What it means is for every one pound invested into the community health worker model, approximately three to four pounds would be saved for Chert Street and Churchill Garden. So now comes to the discussion. Greater return on investment was found in Chert Street and Churchill Garden when comparing to Westminster. It is mainly due to the difference in prevalence of diseases in these deprived wards due to poor environment or poor lifestyle behaviors. So implementing the CHW models in chosen localities with particularly high needs could increase accessibility of healthcare to high-risk users, improve their health outcomes, and at the same time, reducing health inequalities within the community. There are some systematic reviews over the years pointing out that the lack of cost analysis on the CHW interventions, and these results are invaluable as they provide an explicit basis for comparison between alternatives in terms of financial inputs and outputs. And to my knowledge, no study to date has investigated the cost-benefit of implementing the model in the UK. And the modeling study demonstrates the impact of CHW in different timeframes, size areas, and also health outcomes in both short term and long term. This study, however, has some limitations. One potential weakness of cost-benefit analysis is that it is not too sensitive to social benefits that occur as a public good, such as immunization. And long-term benefits of obesity management or quality of life improvement were excluded because they were hard to measure. And only high-impact, high-pervasance conditions were picked for this analysis. But all chronic disease management could be improved through the health workers. So if we include all long-term benefits, this could further add the sizable financial benefits, and hence the advantages of the CHW models could be higher than our estimation. And now comes to the public health implications. CHW model is no doubt the key to a more holistic and cost-effective intervention, and at the same time, a stepping stone to foster self-reliance and community participation. The healthcare system in the UK is unique. Therefore, the model in Brazil cannot be directly replicated, considering the baseline difference in health needs and equalities. Yet lessons can be learned from different countries when developing a culturally sensitive CHW system in the UK. And as the roles of CHW varies in different countries, it is very important to define the responsibility and titles of workers so to avoid the conflicts of roles between health professionals. And this study is not advocating the replacement of other professional, but the collaboration between primary services, so to share the workflows and also improve the effectiveness. CHW models is capable to rapidly scale up as the health workers could be recruited and trained within a short period of time. Yet despite the flexible nature, a large-scale, sustainable CHW intervention still requires long-term strategies on budget planning and also policy prioritization. So a suggested next step would be a pilot, which can be further evaluated the effectiveness, feasibility, sustainability, and also acceptability of introducing the model into the community. However, a pilot at scale with a longer timeframe is required to assess the merits in long-term health management. And more study would also be required to provide more reliable data for future implementation and evaluation. So to conclude, this study informs key decision-makers on the potential health and economic benefits that shows on the slides, as well as helping with resource planning for rolling out the pilot in Chert Street and Churchill Garden. So to end with, I would like to introduce another Chinese term called "Lan Hoc Guazhen", meaning not to take a well until one is thirsty. The investment in preventative measures such as CHW models is necessary to bridge the gap between community and healthcare services. The outbreak of COVID-19 brings the alarm for urgently needed primary healthcare that can support this community and to transform our sick care into a true healthcare. After all, only by strengthening our community resilience can we truly withstand the current and any future pandemics. Thank you very much. This is the end of my presentation.
Thank you so much, Reina. I'll applaud on everyone's behalf. This has, again, been a really fantastic piece of work. And thank you, Reina, for the brilliant presentation. Again, I was surprised by the findings in that I did expect that there was going to be a cost-benefit for Churchill Gardens, but I was also surprised at how big the potential savings were for Westminster as a whole, given that there's quite a contrast in wealth and connectedness overall. Can I just check if anybody's got any questions for Reina? Matt, is that an old hand? Sonia? Sonia, you're muted.
I'm a lay member with West London.
I'm a lay member with West London CCG and also part of ARC as a patient representative. I have worked a lot on our West London My Care My Way project. And I'm really just assuming you are well aware of that. The role of health and social care assistance is somewhat different. They're based within GP practices. But I think some of the things they undertake and some of the support they give, particularly in our case to older people, has many echoes with what you're proposing. So I think, you know, there is a very demonstrable need for these kinds of support and across a community. People who live in a particular area, I think, is very, very valid and important. And I think is all of what both of you have said is really emphasized further by what's been happening with the reaction to COVID over recent months. So it sounds a really brilliant idea.
Thank you, Sonia. And I completely agree with you. I think the national drive towards social prescribing is kind of echoing the the need for this kind of community approach. And interestingly, so for those who don't know My Care My Way, it's funded by the CCGs in the Royal Borough of Kensington and Chelsea mainly for everybody over 65. And it is a social prescribing model, and it is inclusive in the sense that everybody's eligible if they're over 65. But it's not universal in the sense that it targets people at high need. So it's interesting to hear Vidya talk about the crossover between social prescribers and and community health workers. And I think what was identified is that it really appealed to people that this was geography-based and not based on a particular need or a particular characteristics. Matt?
Yeah, thank you so much, Connie. And Rhaina, once again, congratulations on just a fantastic piece of work. Again, it's been a pleasure working with you on this. It was really just to reinforce a couple of the points that you've made, but also just to strengthen those little bits, which is around, of course, you know, this role really resonates with much of what we're already doing in our local sort of ecosystem. But there's also some of these fundamental differences as well in that it has these three characteristics of universality, integration, and comprehensiveness that really makes the model quite a paradigm shift at the same time from what we're currently doing. And it's reaching that step where we can sort of make that paradigm shift. I think the suggestion of a pilot program is really going to be critical. So your work's really important in that regard. I think the modeling is, if anything, an underestimation, as you said, of the potential benefits. These small interactions that community health workers have with their populations that they're responsible for are fundamental. But at scale, they testulate up into huge significant impact for the system as a whole and for the population as a whole, which is what we've seen in Brazil. So I think that's really important to mention. And then just final point is really just to say that one of the fundamental challenges, I think, is around patient choice here. Because community health workers in the role that you're specifying are allocated, if you like, to a geographic region. And so the households there can't pick and choose who would be their community health worker. And I think that makes for a really interesting challenge for this particular role in local context. So just to extend to Vidya, the importance of really engaging with the patient service user population to find out how they would react to that kind of role is really going to be mission-critical for this sort of pilot. But thank you.
Thanks, Matt. I don't know if there is time to share Vidya the story from one of your social prescribers or another role who actually emphasized. And I think this is critical to this role is that often all of the other people we have working in this space rely on people recognizing need and also to some extent referrals. So the My Care My Way or social prescribing link worker role that's been created to some extent always relies on somebody recognizing their need and referring. And one of the people interviewed by Vidya mentioned how they found themselves in a difficult position and somebody knocked on the door, some outreach worker, and she sent them away because she didn't think she had any needs. And when they came back the next week, she had lots of questions. And I think we have a lot of activity going on, and sometimes that creates a little bit of chaos and loss of oversight. And we kind of assume that everybody is covered, but actually there is a lot of unmet need that's just invisible. And I think for me, that's one of the main beauties of this role, that nobody's left out. I mean, it's people's choice whether they want to engage. Of course it is. But sometimes people need some kind of help to recognize that they actually do need help and that help is available. If there are no more questions, I would like to move on to Neesa's presentation. And I'm also really pleased to see Neesa speak about her topic. It all fits with the kind of reverse innovation scheme that we've got going. And I think it's also really, really important in terms of changing our approach to youth offending. We know that it's reaching endemic proportions, and what we're doing is obviously not really effective. And I think we need to rethink how we approach this in a more preventative and holistic way. So I'll hand over to Neesa.
Thank you, Connie. Let me just share my screen. Okay.
Great, we can see that.
Okay, great. Hello, everybody. My name is Neesa, and I'm going to talk to you about my dissertation project titled "Breaking the Cycle: Evaluation and Improvement of a Community Outreach Pilot for Youth Offending." So just to give you some background, children in London who took part in offending behaviors made up the largest share of young people in custody in England and Wales in 2019. So it's become especially important that the city relies on public health approaches to reduce youth offending in the city. And in London, along with other boroughs, including Hackney, the Royal Borough of Kensington and Chelsea is attempting to use public health strategies to tackle youth offending in the borough. And in August 2019, the borough introduced its first Detention Outreach Team, also known as the DOT, to tackle youth offending using a contextual safeguarding approach where they focus on significant harm faced by young people outside of their home environments, whether it be in schools or in their local neighborhoods. And the role of the DOT included going to these areas and engaging with young people one-on-one and firsthand and understanding their needs, and also, most importantly, signposting them to various provisions and activities that would help deter them from taking part in offending behaviors. So at first, I conducted a literature review to understand existing research on youth offending. So I was able to look into factors, risk factors of youth offending, which include trauma in early childhood or adverse childhood experiences, also known as ACEs, also having a convicted parent, and also facing huge socioeconomic barriers. I also looked at youth offending in gang involvement and why young people would join gangs, including exploitation, finding appeal in gang culture, or feeling like they need a sense of belonging. I explored existing interventions for young people in RBKC, and this includes youth clubs that you may have heard of, such as the Harrow Club and Rugby Portobello. And I also looked at public health approaches to reduce offending that already exist in the UK. So for example, the Safer Bristol Partnership, which recruited and trained volunteer mentors from the community, so community champions, to mentor young people at risk of offending and give them advice on employment and education. So in terms of my study, I used a qualitative approach. So I was able to conduct a three-hour participant observation session where I followed two of the DOT workers around during a typical shift. And I also conducted eight semi-structured interviews with a wide range of stakeholders, including council workers, youth provision leaders, educational representatives, and police officers. And with the data collected and the interviews transcribed, I was able to analyze my results and come to some key conclusions. So firstly, I'll talk about my participant observation. So as you can see on this map, I was able to map out the route of the outreach that we took on that particular session. And we covered a large area of North Kensington. And you can see from the bubbles, these are the areas that we stopped to interact with either young people or local stakeholders such as shopkeepers or police. And I was able to really observe and make notes on how the young people have built relationships with the DOT over the past year and how they interact, and also understand the relationship that the DOT had with the local community and how they had really become a key part of the local community and were almost expected to be seen around the area by each of these stakeholders. And this session gave me the opportunity to plan out my interview guide and plan my interviews and what kind of questions to ask and how to frame each of my interviews with my stakeholders. And I was able to narrow down on five key themes that were discussed. Some of them regarding the factors that lead to young people offending in the borough, and some on the actual DOT and the sustainability of it. So I'm going to speak to you briefly about some of the key themes. So the first one was perceptions of authority and how participants seem to think that young people have a fear of involvement when it comes to getting involved in activities and provisions led by authoritative figures and also feelings of mistrust and disconnectedness. However, overall, the general consensus was that although the DOT were part of the council and therefore part of an authority, this kind of fear of involvement came mainly with the police, and young people were reluctant to take part in any intervention set up by the police. And as you can see on the second quote, one of the council workers said that having these independent DOT offices working in that location meant that they've got someone they can engage with, a responsible adult that's there to help with their safety. So it seems that the DOT is there to bridge a gap which reduces this feelings of mistrust and disconnectedness and acts as the ears and eyes on the ground that weren't there before. And the young people seem to have more of a trusting relationship with the DOT and see them as separate to the local authorities. Sorry. Another key theme that came up was gang culture and vulnerability. So similar to what I learned in my literature review, so the issues facing this particular area included exploitation, a need for belonging, and gang culture appeal. So as the youth provider said here in the second quote, when you're in a gang, you belong to something, and it's replacing a constructive institution that young people want to belong to. And the role of the DOT seems to have been to step in and introduce young people to constructive institutions that they can choose over and above being part of a gang. For example, they are signposted to different clubs, including boxing clubs and football clubs in the area, which stop them from spending more time outside of school or outside of home on the street where they could be faced with exploitation and instead be taking part in positive and enriching activities that can be beneficial for their future. So with these key themes, I was able to understand push and pull factors for youth offending in RBKC. So for example, push factors that lead young people away from taking part in offending behaviors include police presence in the area, education on what will happen if they are caught offending, and also engaging activities that deter young people from taking part in offending behaviors. And pull factors that lead young people to commit offenses include peer pressure and family influences, identity struggle and a need to belong to something, and also even boredom and restlessness. We also further discussed the actual DOT approach and the benefits of having such a team in the borough. And the key subthemes that came up included community collaboration, tailoring to need, and building relationships. So everybody was, all the participants agreed that this was positive in the sense that it allowed young people to have a role model to look up to and an adult to rely on their daily visits, on the DOT's daily visits around their area. And as one of the police officers said, what the outreach workers are doing is like what the drug dealers are doing. They're giving them an opportunity. And in this instance, the opportunity is to explore different talents and different activities in the area that are free budget but that they just didn't know about. And the DOT is a key connector between the young people and these activities and encouraging them to actually attend these activities and spend less time feeling bored or feeling down and thus leading to potential offending behaviors. Although most of the feedback was positive, there were some issues that came up, including issues with consistency and communication. So this could be seen as a hurdle for continuation. For example, one of the educational representatives said that it was a bit sporadic and there was no kind of warning as to when and where the DOT workers will arrive. And this could be pinned down to potentially the coronavirus crisis and there not being real kind of scope to plan out months in advance. However, this could be something that could be improved in the future. And also, something that's key, especially in the Westminster point of view, is that several of the participants discussed the need for cross-boundary work and the need for cross-border communication. So at the moment with the DOT, there is only real support for young people from RBKC when they are in the borough. But there are a lot of conflicts and tensions between groups in Westminster, Hammersmith and Fylham and RBKC. And so, as one of the police officers suggested, it could be good to increase collaboration between police and outreach workers across the three boroughs to really give a holistic form of support for young people. So just to go over the key findings. So firstly, specific issues faced by vulnerable young people in RBKC that cause them to turn to offending behaviors include poor peer and family influences, vulnerability to join local gangs, low self-esteem and confidence, and a lack of direction. Secondly, the DOT has been successful in breaking barriers between young people and the council workers and in encouraging the building of trusted relationships and increasing the scope for contextual safeguarding. And thirdly, the DOT needs to work on improving communication with stakeholders such as schools and maintain consistency of visits and provisions if they are to continue being successful. Overall, this piece of research gives insight onto future policies that could be thought about by the borough. For example, there could be an increased focus on a multi-agency early intervention approach to reduce youth offending so that costs incurred in later stages of offending can be reduced significantly. And also, as was mentioned by several of the participants, a greater collaboration between police and support provision and an increase in trust by young people regarding provisions relating to police and the council workers could be encouraged to increase the scope of the DOT. Next steps, what would be really useful is to conduct a holistic cost-effectiveness analysis. And this would help to understand the real benefits of the DOT. Right now, it could be seen as quite an expensive project for what it is doing. However, by looking at the judiciary and police cost that it could be potentially saving and also the cost of lost productivity, and most importantly, the cost of personal life for these potential young offenders, it could be that the overall cost of this particular project is very little compared to the overall benefits that it can bring. That's all. Thank you so much for listening.
Thanks, Neesa, again, for a fantastic presentation and really, really interesting topic. I think there were a few things that came out from this work for me, that some thoughts that I had. One is that you're looking at an intervention which has the relationship to residents at its heart. And it just made me think how often we deliver interventions or services and we look at the process or the product that we're delivering, and we're not really thinking about the relationships that get established as a process. And then can also be destroyed if that intervention is being taken away and what the cost of stopping something is. So that was really interesting for me to... So that was really interesting for me to 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 realize that. The other thing is a theme that comes through more and more is about the multi-agency working. Like you said, you know, we can't really afford to to work in silos in the way that we've done in the in the past. And there's a lot of resource wasted not collaborating with other agencies. And then yeah, I think that's that's kind of my my thoughts. The other thing, of course, that also connects with with the work on the community health workers is is that the community offer is really important. So what you were saying about actually having an alternative to offending for these young people who are trying to find their purpose, trying to find out what they're good at and where they belong and that it's kind of easy pickings when they're bored or there's no alternative. And my favorite quote about social prescribing is that instead of prescribing from a well-stocked pharmacy, you prescribe from a well-stocked community. And I think all of this work made me think again about how much we need to actually invest and foster community offers in that way. I'm just checking, checking, is there anybody who's got a question while I'm talking away? Checking in the chat. So Sonia wants to know what impact has the Grenfell Tower tragedy had on and the aftermath on young people in your study?
Yeah, that's a really great question. So actually, when we look at the the first theme that we're talking about regarding perceptions of authority, one of the key issues faced by young people when it comes to fear of involvement was because of the Grenfell tragedy. And although there were fears of involvement regarding the police prior, this kind of involvement of the council regarding this tragedy really kind of set the tone of mistrust among the local community. And also, so I interviewed two youth club providers and they also mentioned that even among staff, there's this feeling of mistrust when it comes to the council. And it's kind of building that rapport back up through interventions like this that is important. And what they understood is that by not wearing a uniform and by just having a discreet badge and just disclosing at some point in the conversation that they are part of the council, but you know, that they're not coming in with the fanfare of we're the council, you listen to us, that kind of power dynamics, they've really gotten through to the young people. So I think using projects like the DOT is really helping rebuild that bridge that was definitely kind of burned down by the Grenfell Tower tragedy.
Thank you. Any other questions? We've got we've got about five minutes before before we rejoin everybody. Do people feel like they want to have a quick break to get some coffee or? Any, Matt?
Hi again. Well, whilst people are thinking of their questions, I thought I'd chip in. Once again, Neesa, just a fantastic presentation. It's been wonderful working with you on this as well with Connie. Connie, you mentioned, in fact, just in passing, this idea of reverse innovation, which of course is a common theme, isn't it, throughout all of these three presentations? This idea of learning from actually low-income country contexts and seeing what are the opportunities to bring those innovations across into the UK as a high-income country context, this idea of reverse innovation. So Neesa, my question to you really is about, of course, this model that you're speaking to here is very much based on some experiences in Colombia, if I'm not mistaken. So what do you think it is about low-income country contexts that offer opportunities to develop these sorts of innovative, holistic, comprehensive kind of models that you're speaking about? What's happening in that space and why do you think there's now an appetite for us to be learning from those settings?
Yeah. So in the interest of time, I wasn't able to mention this earlier. So one of the key inspirations that come for the UK is from Cali in Colombia, where the mayor of Cali was able to implement a really successful public health approach to reduce knife crime and gun crime in the city. And he did this by conducting really multi-dimensional interventions across the city where all different kinds of stakeholders were involved. And I think that learning from them here, it's this move towards multi-dimensional approach. So for example, in Glasgow, a similar example was, sorry, it was taken as an example from Cali again. And this idea of working together with police, with schools, with other local stakeholders, even shops and other facilities in the area to really come together and work on one particular issue, but all together from different perspectives. And that has been something that's really coming into practice here. And I think that seeing the success of such a large-scale operation in a place like Cali has really inspired the UK to follow in its footsteps. And so this idea of reverse innovation is really taking off in the public health spectrum.
Do you think it's the lack of money that we have at the moment that inspires some of this?
Do you think so? I'm not sure. Because I do think that it is like collaboration really does make things much more kind of available as well, you know, so not just one team that has demand an entire operation. You can kind of rely on each other's expertise as well. But yeah, that could be a reason.
And I think I think there's a general trend towards collaborating and a focus on community, I think, with the difficulties that we're facing. Absolutely. Thank you, Neesa. I think if if there are no more questions, we could, so the way to get back into the meeting is to leave this room and then you should you should be able to join the the room again that we were in before. So any any more questions before we leave and join the other?
Hi, everyone. Because I got something to do now, so I have to leave. And thank you so much for inviting me for this presentation. I enjoyed it a lot.
Rhaina, thank you. Thank you for dialing in from Hong Kong. Got to mention this. It's fantastic about the technology, isn't it, that you're able to do this now? What time is it at your?
It's seven.
Fantastic. Okay, it's not too horrendous. Okay, thank you very much, Rhaina. Thanks for joining us. Thank you.